Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the September 14th, 2023 Board of Selectmen meeting, again, both virtual and in person. And as always, we'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, and then I'd like it all to ask you all to remain standing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you could please remain standing for a moment of silence for Earth Porter, a longtime Greenwich resident and volunteer who recently passed away. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 24th, 2023?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camello, is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thank you. And is there a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of August 24th, 2023?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camello, is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you. Going on to the updates, I'll start with the first selectmen's updates. There's a bunch. They're not in any particular order. We recently did a tour of the old Greenwich Civic Center, just to get an update, and we're going to plan several more in the next few months. It should be, the shell should be done in a few months, and we're hoping to get this done, completed by late spring, early summer of next year. It's a beautiful building. People are going to be really happy. This has been several decades, going back into the 80s, lots of attempts, but we're just really proud to get this over the, over the goal line in the coming months. So I think everybody's going to be really happy with, with the finished product there. This past weekend, we had the two 9/11 events at Cosco Park, where we heard Frank Kelly, brother of Joe Kelly, speak. And then we went over to Glenville that night for the ceremony there. So thank you for all of the groups who put that together, Ninth District Vets, the Fire Department over in Glenville, and Wells Noonan, and Stephanie Donashley over in Cosco, as well as the committees that helped them. We also attended the Cosco Library Annual Open House. And also, I wanted to congratulate them on a survey they put out, really a great response, and some exciting plans in store for the Cosco Library. So stay tuned for that in the coming months. Attended a newcomers event, the annual one at the beach on Sunday. Their group is getting bigger and bigger, and it's a lot of people who are not newcomers anymore, and they're actually still staying on, hanging in there. So it's a good, good thing to see. It's good to show the Greenwich spirit to all those that are just moving to our town. We also, last Saturday, had a dedication to our friend Winston Robinson over at Armstrong Court. If you've been, you remember the old courts, it was in the open-air room, not really a room, it was just an open-air covered space there that we used to have, everybody at the courts used to have barbecues and get-togethers, and Winston, I remember many, attending many with Winston over the years, and now it's now the Winston Robinson Community Room. So it's a beautiful space, and we're really looking forward to many years of events there in honor of our great friend. And, let's see, Greenwich High School opened up their season successfully against Fairfield Prep on Saturday. There's a game tonight, so if you can make it, get over to Cardinal Stadium. They're in defense of their state championship. I know Coach Morello is very excited, and he, congratulations to him for having his first child the other day, so we're excited for the coach. Did a walk at Weaver Street the other day, just to follow up on the Glenville Forum. That was one of the things that came up about the pedestrian safety issue there, and we think we came up with a plan. It's going to take some rejiggering of the Capitol projects in the coming weeks for next year, but we think we have a good plan there that everybody will be happy with, and will keep people from crossing the road, a very busy road over there at Weaver Street. The, oh, Pomerance, I took a walk with Bob D'Angelo and Vin DeMarco with the Bike Task Force, which is now the Active Transport Task Force.
Yes.
Thank you, to incorporate a lot more things in addition to biking. And came up with an idea for central, in the area of Central Middle School, from Orchard Street to Bible Street, Pomerance, Tuckman area there, and going all the way to Bible Street, where the, where the, what's the, not the arboretum, the...
Greenwich Botanical Center?
Greenwich Botanical, you'd think I would, I grew up on the street, and you'd think I would know that. Greenwich Botanical Garden, right there, where there's an idea to get some bike paths off, off-road, where there already are trails for people to walk. And I'm a hiker, so I'm, I'm good, because we have so many hiking trails, and we keep adding to them, but the bikers are getting short-changed here. So we're looking at areas where we can put a bike path next to a trail. And we think we have a great idea that will not only get the bikers out there to enjoy our, our open space and our, our woods, but also to, for any kids who maybe, might go to Central that live in the Clover Place area around there, and Bible Street, and all those side streets, to get them off-road, where they could actually cut across that area, get some exercise, and bring them right out to Central Middle School to the crosswalk. Joe Cicliano walked it the other day, and Greg Kramer, our tree warden, and coming up with a plan there to hopefully present at a forum that we're going to do in a few days. So stay tuned for that. We did the Golden Lights Flag Raising the other day with Greg Paletti. Great cause, we've done about three or four of those events here, and it's for pediatric cancer, so we'll have more. And these do, we're actually having the half marathon coming up in, I think, this weekend.
Sunday.
Sunday. So hopefully, if you haven't signed up there, they also have a 5K for those who don't want to do the half marathon. They have, last year, they had over 500 people, this year, there's more. So they're having a great success. Red Cross ribbon cutting the other night. Finally, they celebrated the building completion over on Indy Fair Road. It was a great time had by all. Had a meeting with the property owners on Greenwich Avenue in that area about parking, and we have some ideas. Tomorrow, I'm going to be meeting with a private party, just to give them an idea about what we're thinking, and then going to put more feelers out there. There are several out there already, just to get some ideas about the surface parking lots we have, to see how we can get more parking without building ugly standalone structures. And so it's an ongoing endeavor, but we're making some progress here now, and I've done some research nationally about what other municipalities have done. And what else? We're Byron Vet's 75th anniversary tomorrow night at TJ, TNJ's in Portchester. If you haven't been there, great food, great organization, and happy to celebrate their 75th. Saturday, we're doing the Mexican Flag Raising here, I believe at 9:00.
10.
10:00, even better. And then we have a Greenwich Fire Department Retirement Party Saturday night. Four retirees will be honoring. And Constitution Day is this Sunday at 10:00. We'll be doing a little proclamation here. And then the annual Cosco Republican Clambake, which is about 600 years old, goes back at least about 67 years. It's something that's been around forever, and they usually get a big crowd there. I think the Democrats kicked off...
They kicked off on Sunday.
Sunday. So that's, we're in the political season officially, and then it, it ends abruptly in early November. And the, it's hard to read my own writing sometimes. We have the Town of Greenwich Service Awards at 1:00 on Tuesday. We have a Storm Preparedness Forum with Emergency Operations Director Joe LaSella on the 20th, here, in this, in this room. Also, that night, Children of the Fallen Patriots are having an event over at Innisardin. And then Heather Parks Gaudio, who's the daughter of Frank Gaudio of Greenwich, First Bank of Greenwich, is having her grand opening of her fine art gallery on Greenwich Avenue, 382 Greenwich Avenue, 6:00. Coastal Cleanup, 23rd, Susie Baker would kill me if I didn't mention that, at 10:00. Earth Porter's Memorial Service, for anybody wants to go, is over at St. Clement's at 11:00 that day. American Legion BBQ, 2:00 that day at the Tom Higgins House. Glenville Pembroke Valley Jam that day. And then the Ablest Dancing with the Stars is also that night. Sunday, 24th, Putting on the Dog at Roger Sherman Ballma Park. The 26th is my friend Geraldine Christoffersen's 100th birthday, probably about the, you know, the 50th that we've had in the last couple of years. And then the, oh, the Expo, the Employee Health Fair, Health and Safety Fair Forum is 11:00 on the 27th, in this room here. That's the 27th, it's the Health and Safety Fair. So sorry about the lengthy announcements, but I wanted to get them all in there. I'll turn it over to Lauren. Good morning, Lauren.
Good morning, everyone. And Fred, just a small correction, the Pembroke-Glenville Valley Jam is Sunday, the 24th, I think, same day as Putting on the Dog. They were originally going to do it on Saturday, but they changed it to Sunday.
Okay, well, they can go a little early, though.
So, thanks.
Thank you.
I just lost my train of thought. So, just some of the things that I've been working on. I am the liaison to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and there is going to be a public forum on the trust fund on Thursday, October 28th. Fred, I believe you're on the panel for that? So I welcome the community to come to learn more about the trust fund, and maybe even bring your pocketbooks. And it is a 501(c)(3) and accepting contributions, and I'll just give a plug for it. It's a way to help developers defray the cost of development and keep housing affordable without having to go the 830G route. So important that we participate as a town. Also, been working really hard as part of the Central Middle School Building Committee, and thank you, Fred, for helping expedite everything we can so that we get the MI approval and can move forward with that really important project that, I believe I speak for all three of us, that we support wholeheartedly. I joined Fred on the tour of Eastern Greenwich Civic Center, very impressive. It's going to be so exciting for that area and, you know, all of Greenwich to participate. I remember back in the day, roller skating, so it is, it's not just for Eastern Greenwich, it's for the entire community. I also attended the newcomers' Clambake, so a little bit of a plug, they are looking to draw more attendance from the western end of town, so if you are new to town and live on the western end, definitely something to think about participating and joining new residents to Greenwich, it was quite fun. And yesterday was an interesting day. It was actually Positive Thinking Day. I'm not so sure everybody was participating in Positive Thinking Day yesterday, if you read some of the press. And I wish Barbara Schellenberg was here, because I want to personally thank her and her staff, the town employees who are in the law department, and I'm going to emphasize employees, as well as the partners and the lawyers in her firm. And again, I'm going to emphasize employed, because they have been harassed over certain things that are coming forward. And it's one thing to harass politicians, I think we sign up for it, although it's not fun, but I'd like everybody in town to remember that these are town employees, and they do not deserve to be harassed. They're professionals, and we need to respect that. And then I'll end it on a note for those celebrating Rosh Hashanah, a very sweet New Year.
Thank you very much, Lauren. Good morning, Janet.
Good morning, thank you. And Fred, I think your, your list was pretty thorough, so I don't know that I have necessarily anything to add, but since town committee events are clearly fair game, I'll just, I'll, yes, I'll say that on Sunday, the DTC had a great picnic. Laura Erickson and I, and the whole slate are having a great, great start to the campaign season, so that was a lot of fun. I didn't know about the, the tour of the Eastern Greenwich Civic Center. That is my neighborhood, so if we have, if we haven't...
You absolutely can request one with, the reason why we did that is we didn't want to do it, the three of us, because, and then get accused. But even though technically, I still have an issue with that, because we weren't, we weren't really doing business, even if it was the three of us, it's just a tour. So it was kind of a last moment, for the moment thing, but I think we were going to wait a couple more weeks until the glass comes there, and then invite Mr. and Mrs. Cohen, if they want to come with us. So it would really be like, just an update, a status update with, with everybody who wants to come there in a few weeks, and then guarantee towards the end of the year, when it, the shell should be complete. But you, if you wanted to go before, then just shoot Luigi a note.
Well, if it's, if it's a public event, any and all of us can come, and, and that would be great if we had, if it was a public event and it was posted and...
It didn't have to, it didn't have to be posted, because it was, Luigi and I, we were talking about doing this for several weeks, and that, actually, that day, we were going, we were right near there, so...
No, no, I'm saying in future.
Yeah, I probably, we could, you could do it now if you want, but I think we talked about this, I don't know if you were there, but Luigi, and it makes a little bit more sense if we just wait a few more weeks, when there's a little bit more there to...
That's fine.
You can get an idea now, it's kind of...
That's, that's fine, no, I just, I want to, you know, I think, I think that, you know, our community has waited for a long time for this, and I think they'd be very excited to see what the progress is.
Yeah, absolutely. It's looks, it's a little bit bigger, but it looks a lot bigger in the way it's been redone, and I still think there may be some things that they could even, you know, amend a little bit, too, but so far, so, you know, it's really, really impressive, and you can start to, I think, again, in a few more weeks, you'll start to get a better feel for what it's going to actually look like. But yeah, I mean, I would wait a few more weeks, but certainly, you're, you're more than welcome to send Luigi a note. With that, we're going to go on to Old, and thank you for your update, discussion of the proposed flag policy. We're not taking a vote today, but Laura McGeechee is here, Assistant Town Attorney. Thank you, Laura.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
Oh, sorry, I need to be on. Good morning, so I just wanted to follow up. We had the first read of the proposed flag policy at the last Board of Selectmen meeting, and there was a lot of input and constructive comments made, which I think we have done our best to incorporate in the revised flag policy. Most notably, changed from the first version, just to be clear on the intent and purpose that we are, you know, any flag raising is government speech as opposed to private speech. Secondly, also, to provide for, there was talk about grandfathering certain flags, to keep with ongoing traditions. And typically, with policy, just like law and legislation, it's proactive versus retroactive. So we took those comments to include a provision, as Selectwoman Raven suggested, on doing a January meeting of the Board Selectmen, look at past flag raisings, do the slate, because obviously, every calendar changes every year, and have a slate of flags that have been, and use the language to incorporate kind of that grandfather thinking, in that it shall be consistent with past practices, so that, you know, if you've had flags raised in the past, they shall continue. Meet, have that slate calendar, so that it could be then proposed at a meeting for approval for the year. And I think that that is a very good way to handle keeping up with the traditions that have been instituted so far. As far as, and again, so I think, just cleanup, and also, in keeping with that January, we put in an effective date for the policy. I mean, subject, I know we're having a third read end of September, but to, just to make it clean on the calendar year of January 1, in keeping with kind of this slate of flags going forward. So happy to answer any other questions, or regarding the revisions, or anything else the Selectmen have for me.
Well, thank you so much, Laura. And I saw the one from Fred Brooks with the emergency medical...
Oh, yes, I apologize. I wanted to include, I did include, that was the other revision made, sorry to interrupt, I just, I'm glad that you raised that, that there was just some language on the half-staff in honoring, you know, employees, because there was question on JEM's volunteer staff, et cetera. So we changed JEM's volunteer to first responder, to encompass all the volunteer companies that are there, just to address what you mentioned, yes, Mr. Brooks.
Yeah, well, thank you very much. You know, we're, lots of people have reached out, and I believe that, you know, there's, there were some, I got to be honest, there were some people that were annoyed with some of the letters to the editor and the postings by people who are ascribing motives to people who want to keep it just the, the three main flags, the United States, which is the one that's the most important one to all of us, the state of Connecticut, and the Town of Greenwich, which was our first thought, but, you know, we didn't want to, not only create a lot of work for all of us, but also to not make it too hard for people who have been raising flags for decades here, and I know I've been attending them for decades, and so we tried to do that, but there's some people that are really concerned about that, and they didn't like some of the tones and the accusations. So I would caution people, no matter what they feel, when they're writing letters and posting on social media, to think twice, because you're not helping your case at all, and in fact, you're going to end up with a backlash. So please, just be considerate. The majority of people, I think, are leaning towards what we're leaning towards, but it doesn't help when you have those kinds, you know, or that intolerance that we've seen here this week, where people are protesting speakers, yet when other speakers come here, there's no protest, and it really, really bothers me, because it's bullying, and that, there's, that's no, there's no place in any town for that. You need to respect people's opinions, and, and certainly, you could have an opinion on it, but, you know, the name-calling, all that, it just, unfortunately, it highlights who the person is making those, those posts and the name-calling, so not helpful, but to the, to the, most of the people who reached out with, you know, positive thoughts and constructive criticism, that's great, keep them coming, we, that's what we really want. So, thank you.
I have a question, because I think a lot of the feedback that we got was to still use that grandfather clause, and although that's not what I said, that's kind of what I meant when I said a calendar of events, so can you clarify again, like, just from a policy perspective?
Well, again, there was some discussion last time, do you call out specific flags? I think it's just better to have a general policy as opposed to listing flags, because then you're either prohibiting others or not, you know, as the specific, and it's just typically a policy of law and legislation, and this is a policy to have it prospective and not necessary. I mean, again, I am, I follow your direction on this, and whatever that you deem to be best, but I think also, I think the Board of Selectmen's in the, it's your policy to be in the position to propose a slate of flags, and I think it said, shall be consistent, because your key, the purpose of having this hybrid model is to keep up with past traditions. So, again, it's just typically what you do for policy, law, and legislation is to have it prospective, and I think naming particular, or even using the word grandfathering, is not, is not appropriate use here, in, in my opinion, or the law department opinion.
Understood. I'll make sure I strike that from my vocabulary, thank you. Janet.
Well, I want to start by saying thank you for, I know a lot of, of work has gone into this, this is a really sensitive issue, and I'm, I'm proud of us all that we've, we've kept this a very civil discussion, and I, I'm looking forward to constructively working out some questions I have. So admittedly, I'm a policy wonk, you know, that's, that's my background, so I'm looking at this strictly as a piece of policy right now, and so that's, those are the, my comments that I'm going to make right now, whether it's a flag-raising policy, whether it's a public art policy, you know, I just want to make sure that it's clear and a, and a good policy. So we still have, we still have the question, one of the, one of the clauses says, it shall be decided by the first selectman or the Board of Selectmen, and I think that that makes it a little bit ambiguous, ambiguous. I think that, I think we want it to be clear, and I'm obviously biased, being a member of the Board. I think it should be the Board, because then any votes are public, and frankly, it protects you, it's not all on you, it's, it's on all of us. So if you could, if you could strike that and just say that it, it shall be voted on, I forget the language, but it shall be voted on by the Board of Selectmen.
And it does say, in policy, under number three, it says, "Other commemorative or organizational flags displayed in conjunction with official town events or ceremonies, either by proclamation of the first selectman or by resolution of the Board of Selectmen."
And you want to take out the, if, if you could, if you could take out the either and just make it...
By resolution of the Board of Selectmen, and, and that actually, now that we have that kind of January slate of consistent flags, then that's to be before the full Board, so I can certainly make that change.
Right, and I'd, I'd like to, let's think about this idea of a January vote. It seems to me, you wouldn't, once you grandfather a flag, you don't want to repeatedly vote every January for that same list. So what, you know, what other organizations I've participated in have done, and others are better at writing these kind of policies than I am, you're right, you don't, in the policy, name specific flags that you've grandfathered, but you create a list of the flags that were, that we have historically honored, and in the policy, you reference, you know, these flags have already been approved, and we don't have to revisit, like, these, these shall, and you can come up with the legal language, but, you know, there is a list, we have it, and, you know, we don't, we don't have to revisit it every year, we're just going, we're just going to be considering new request flags.
Okay, so just in understanding your commentary on revision, so there wouldn't be a meeting in January to slate out the calendar of flags, is what you're suggesting?
No, I think we just have to do it once, and, and we, we're close to actually doing it already, we've already sort of, you know, asked Ken, through Ken, we haven't done it privately by ourselves, that wouldn't, FOIA wouldn't like that, but, but Ken has created a draft list of all of the flags we've already honored, that we wouldn't have to revisit every year. That just seems, that seems onerous procedurally.
Yeah, I think, no, I get your point, I definitely get your point, and, you know, anything you could do to expedite and shorten meetings. I'm just wondering, though, I think the whole reason we were going to do that was just to make sure that we, at the beginning of the year, we had all the, a list of these, you know, ceremonies that we do here, and just to have it set up so that the organizations know, I think, and let's, stop me if I'm wrong, I thought that was part of the thinking there.
Yeah, it was a way to publicize and, and put more, because sometimes they're very last minute, so I think it was just a way of, it was an organizational thing as well.
Well, we, but we have the list, we already have it. I think what we're, and this is a third point, and this is, this is not about the flag policy, you are right, we often have very last-minute proclamations, and, you know, to wit, you know, the, the Constitution Day proclamation, which should be, should be, you know, predictable, it's Constitution Day is Constitution Day every year, but still, it comes, kind of comes as a surprise. That's not a flag raising, though, that is just a proclamation, it's just a matter of the organizers reminding us 30 days in advance. So I just wanted a couple things there, I wanted clarity that this policy is just flag raising, you know, that the, that the proclamation process is just, it's, the proclamation process, it's going to be the same.
I know, Darian, when I speak with the first selectwoman there, they, I think they're considering just stopping the proclamations, too, which, you know...
Yeah, but we like our sentence...
No, no, not, not us, but I'm just saying, that's, but they separated it, and so to your point, yes, we do proclamations, as Angie can tell you, all the time.
All the time.
And I think people really love them, and they're, you know, and again, it's the, just like I think they, people love the flag raisings, so...
So, I mean, I, I just, I just don't think we need to vote on a, a calendar every January. I think we can have a, you know, the list with the dates, we can post it to our website. If you, if people want, we can remind them as a matter of, you know, in our, you know, every January, we can say, here you go, remember that there's this calendar. I, I have been a big stickler for putting events on the town calendar. I might be the only person who references the town calendar, but we have been putting flag raisings on the calendar, and that, that is done every January. People could, you know, they could see on the calendar when the different flag raisings are there. Aren't that, we don't actually have that many. We have, we have a ton of proclamations, but we don't have that many flag raisings.
Yeah, and proclamations keep, they're, we add to them weekly. Yeah. And proclamations keep, yeah, they're, we add to them weekly. I mean, let's, I mean, we have two weeks to think about it. I know where you're coming from with this. I just want to make sure we're not missing something. Certainly, we've done this before every year without it, to your point. And certainly, the other point, I'm 100% in agreement with, as far as by resolution of the Board rather than the first selectman. In fact, you know, one of the, one of the tasks, one of the groups I put together like three years ago was really my call to do it as the first selectman. And I actually had wrote into it the Board would be, and I forgot, don't ask me which one, it was about three years ago, that we would actually do it together as a Board. And I think that's, I think you get a little bit more, it's a little more transparency when you do it, the Board, as opposed to whoever's the first selectman. So, so I'm all for that one.
Can I, can I just comment? Because that's section three. And I don't think what was meant, that it's either the first selectman or the Board of Selectmen. It was in conjunction with proclamations from the first selectmen. And the first selectman is the only one that does the proclamations. They're not, they're not, the proclamations are not done on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. So I think, I think that was what it was trying to convey, not that, that only you would decide what flag got.
Okay.
That's fine, but the language was not clear.
Yes, I can certainly clarify that, because I think, I believe, all flag raisings include a proclamation, but not all proclamations include a flag raising.
Exactly.
So, that can certainly be delineated. And for flag raisings, it's by approval of the Board of Selectmen. But if we're saying that commemorative or organizational flags are to be approved by resolution of the Board of Selectmen, that's just going back to that kind of January slate of approval. And I understand your proposal is to reference, when we say shall be consistent with past practices, to say, see attached list of prior, I guess, flag raisings, right? And so know that, I guess you're trying to send, say, then make those inclusive, incorporated by reference, then?
Right. To your point, let's separate. And I know, I don't mean to belabor this, but any flag that we have already raised is, is approved. And we just have to have this schedule. I don't think we need to vote going forward, looking back at those flags. I don't think we have to vote every January. Once, once we have approved them, they're approved, and they're on the list. What you're talking about going forward, that the Board of Selectmen would vote on, is a new flag. One that we have not recognized or honored in the past.
Well, that's true. Any new ones would require, that's the whole point.
A separate.
Yeah.
And we're not, and I don't think we're saying that it had to be voted on every January.
Well, we haven't gotten, I mean, the whole point, I think, was any new ones that we would come before the Board of Selectmen to, to discuss. And then, and wait two weeks, get some public input, and then have a vote. So, that's clear. I mean, that's very, that's very clear. But your point, I mean, we have two weeks. I mean, we could certainly think about what you're saying, because I, I don't think it's that big of a deal. I mean, we have done it this way without voting on it. But I thought we were trying to do it just to be a little bit more organized and, and stay on top of it. As, you know, and they know, 10 years from now, a new Board of Selectmen, they may come in, they may be totally new, and who knows? They, you know, you just don't know what the turnover is, and.
Well, but they would be free to change the policy as they wish.
They certainly would. But again, I just, it was just for some, I don't think it would take that long. But we can, we can talk about it going forward. And, you know, we have a couple of weeks, anyway.
Yeah. Again, I don't want to belabor it, but just, this is probably not a good example, because the policy says that we can raise flags of sovereign nations that, that our country recognizes. But, but look back at Ukraine, you know, when, when this war started in March, the organizers who wanted to show support for Ukraine, they wouldn't have known in January that they wanted to raise the flag in March. So, that's what I'm saying. We're not planning.
Yeah, you're right. But that's a special circumstance.
I understand. It's not a great, it's not a great example, but I'm just trying to, I'm trying to make this policy the least onerous and, you know, most flexible.
Right. So I guess the question is, based on this proposal, is whether in that, so by incorporating a list, you are essentially grandfathering and not having the Board, whoever the Board may be, decide on an annual basis. And the question is, do you want the electors to appoint the Board? I mean, I'm talking 10 years from now, right? Or wherever, you know, to have that ability to adopt or not adopt, et cetera, or, you know, do it your way. So again, I can, I'm listening to all the comments, and will take direction. But I think that's, that's kind of a different approach. So there's.
It's, it is slightly. And I mean, if I had my way, what I'd like to see before our next meeting is a list, like I said, we've sort of already gathered it, a list of the flags that we've already honored, you know, and when, what month we honor them. And a reference, so that, so that those flags are not listed in the policy, but that the policy references the list. And I, yeah, I would not, I would not, as a Board, be voting on that list every January. I think once we approve it, we approve it.
Well, we can.
Yeah, that's a policy decision. I'll leave.
We'll discuss it, talk about, think about it, and be ready to vote in two weeks on it.
Okay. And again, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Appreciate it.
Surely.
So I think we have some members of the public who want to speak?
Oh, I didn't know. Yes.
Please sign up.
Did you, you signed up? Yeah, you don't have, I mean, just sign, sign your name. But, yeah, I should remind everybody, but thank you. We know who you are, by the way.
We're down a person today that would have had to sign up.
I will do. My name is Karsten Wagner. Hi.
Good to see you.
Selectwoman, I'm bringing my power of positive thinking today. At first, I want to commend this Board for welcoming this discussion, truly. We watched other towns grapple with flag issues, and some of them made extreme decisions about what flags can and cannot fly in their towns, because they didn't take this time to be thoughtful. And we're clearly taking a different path in Greenwich. I appreciate it. All three of you, thank you very much for creating this space. Greenwich has an opportunity to be the model when it comes to flag issues, for the town, the state, and the country. I'm not going to shock you today when I tell you I'd like to talk about Pride. Pride is important to me. It's important to me, to my family, and to the growing LGBTQ community here in Greenwich. Our pride celebration, the proclamation, the pride flag raising, all of that, we want to make sure it's protected and preserved in our town. I've heard from all of you, and Mr. Selectman, I've seen in your newsletter, too, that everyone here is committed to pride, not going anywhere. And honestly, I can't tell you how reassuring that is to hear that from this body. It feels really, really good. But, you know, we're talking about a policy, as we were just talking about, that's going to last longer than the makeup of this Board. And I think our community needs more than, you know, reassurances from you, from you three, because you won't always be here. So we're looking for more clarity and certainty, like we were just talking about. I support a flag policy with tighter and clearer language than it's drafted today, because I don't think that our current traditions should be up for discussion and approval. And that's the language that's in this current draft, discussion and approval. I'm not sure what that means. But I don't think it should be up for discussion and approval every year. Pride should not be up for debate. Either should Juneteenth, or St. Patrick's Day, or the Betsy Ross flag on the Fourth of July. These are our celebrations. These are what make us who we are. And you all have the opportunity to enshrine that for the future of this town by, I'm going to say grandfathering, although we're going to strike this from our memory, by creating a policy.
Twenty-five push-ups.
We want to do that to make sure that we can include the previously flown flags and make them exempt from any kind of annual vote. It feels onerous for you. It feels unnecessary for the public. Like you said, the last time we talked about this, Mr. Selectman, that something like this would also make it easier for all of you, right? Give you a lot less work. Everyone who can hear my voice right now knows that the popularity of Pride fluctuates year to year, more than, say, American Red Cross Month. I'd hate to see Greenwich ever in a situation where, you know, sometime in the future, where we don't approve Pride one year, or some years, because a few loud voices in our town made it too difficult for this Board to vote to fly that Pride flag. And I think everyone who can hear my voice right now knows that I have cause to be concerned about that, right? This year's bipartisan Pride event was not met without controversy. But, but for the more than 200 people who showed up on that sunny afternoon in June, including, you know, the four of us here, we celebrated Pride and the reading of the proclamation, the flying of the Pride flag. And it meant something to us. It really did. And I think you know that. I think that Greenwich is big enough to embrace Pride and all of our other celebrations every year without any kind of discussion or approval. Flag policy with a clearer clause will formalize that for the future. And that's what you have the power to do. One last thing, you know, this morning, I was scrolling through all of the many proclamations that have been made this year on the town website. And they're in alphabetical order. And right between Poll Worker Appreciation Day and Professional Municipal Clerks Week, the Pride proclamation is missing. It's not on the town website. And, you know, these things happen. It happens in my office all the time. Like, I'm sure this is a clerical error. I hope it is. But I also hope it's not a sign of things to come, right? We want to make sure that we're proud of our pride. And so I hope that we can clarify this language. I thank you for hearing my voice and taking this into really civil conversation. Like I said, we have the opportunity to show everyone how to fly their flags with Pride. So thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karsten. I really appreciate that. Well, first of all, thank you for how you present things. That is positive, as Lauren said. And that's, that goes a lot farther for all of us, for any, any issue. It's just presenting your case in a positive way. It's, you know, commendable. And thank you so much. The, yeah, part of the thing to, the idea behind doing that once every year was not really to go over, do we ought to take out St. Patrick's Day or Columbus. It was just to get it, the whole point, I was thinking was that we got it there, we just want to make sure that everybody has it on the calendar. It was no, it was not going to be a discussion of the past, but a discussion in tandem with discussion of any new requests, which may or may not be approved. It just depends, because we're, we're getting some that now that are questionable, as far as do they warrant a flag raising. So, and certainly, some flags have, meanings have changed over the time. You know, Deputy Chief Gray's here. I had a flag that was a very pro-police. And I was reminded, or told, I didn't even know, that it would, had been appropriated by somebody else. I had no clue. And so I stopped doing it, because I, you know, things change sometimes. And, you know, I think that's probably one of the, another reason why maybe we would consider just approving what was in the past. But, yeah, I appreciate your thoughts on that. We'll certainly take everything into consideration. Think, any other comments or, okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And thank you, Laura. Okay, going on to new business, a proposal for 30-minute express parking spaces in the Grig Street parking lot. We had a nice meeting the other day. Good to see you, Chief.
Thank you very much. Happy to be here. Shall I get right into it?
Get right into it.
Okay. Well, thank you. So I am Deputy Chief Gray of the Greenwich Police Department. I'm also the Parking Services Director. So, thank you very much for having me. And I live positivity every day. So, it's nothing new to me today. So let's keep that energy going. So, anyway, I, my proposal is, recommendation to convert 12-hour parking spots to 30-minute maximum express parking at the Grig Street Municipal Parking Lot. I put together that little briefing for you, but just to make sure that I'm on the record, I think this, you know, in the end, will be a positive step towards addressing some of the concerns of the residents, as well as the merchants in the central Greenwich area, and particularly down in Grig Street. So I am recommending adjusting the parking time limits for the Grig Street Municipal Parking Lot to better accommodate the need for short-term parking options near Greenwich Avenue and Grig Street. My proposal involves converting five of the current 12-hour parking spaces into quote-unquote "express parking spots" with a maximum time limit, maximum time limit of 30 minutes. This adjustment would help alleviate common complaints from customers about the lack of short-term parking in the downtown area, as well as reduce instances of improper parking. And I anticipate that these changes will make some difference. You know, some of the reasons why the recommendation was made, and particularly for this lot versus any other location, is that it's geographical proximity to Greenwich Avenue. It is fairly close. And you, on the graphic, you could see it. Again, it's a small, little bit of a conversion from a long-term lot into short-term usage. But I think it's a reasonable amount. And it'll definitely, the customers in the area will definitely benefit from it. We're hoping that, you know, the benefit also will be a reduction in illegal parking. The reality is, is that most people don't park illegally for extended periods of time. It's that they have a quick action that they want to execute. And, you know, following the path of least resistance, sometimes improper parking for what they believe to be a minor inconvenience for a few minutes is worth the risk. But given an option, most people just want to apply. And so, conform with the law. So hopefully, this, this option of an available space will help reduce the improper parking. Also, it's, it's cost-effective. It's not going to cost any money outside of our normal budget. Operational costs are already built in. We're just repurposing a few meters. That work is just routine, as well as just the color of the actual meters. Not much. And again, the cost of the meters, just so you know, right? So the costs are going to be consistent with what's on the Greenwich Avenue. Greenwich Avenue, there's no change in cost, right? And so the cost of the customer, to the client, to the resident will remain the same. There are some challenges, you know, we have to acknowledge that. Again, the total capacity of parking in the downtown Greenwich area is not going to change, right? It's just a matter of usage. So total capacity is not going to change. It's just the usage number. So what we're hoping is that, that turnover now will be impactful to at least those customers. So we go from one customer every two hours to four customers every two hours, right? And so multiply that by five, you know, at least that, if, at the optimal usage rate, there should be that many more happy customers who found a parking space. The, also, there is an accessibility consideration, you know, we kind of looked at that, you know. It is not ideal for those with some mobility challenges. It, you know, again, geographic, oh, thank you for the graphic, right? So it's kind of at the bottom of a slight grade, right? And so those that would prefer to shop on the avenue with, again, a short-term parking, these spots might not be the best for them. However, you know, those customers that don't have mobility issues might now go down. And so we'll displace, you know, some of the, hopefully, they'll shift down and use those spaces that perhaps will leave more spaces for those that must have parking closer to the location that they want. And so we recognize that it's less than ideal in that instance. But again, the proximity to the avenue, the spaces that we actually have available, the actual configuration in that lot lends itself to making a specific change that is readable to the average person, right? So you'll have a bank of express meters right there that people will see and hopefully turn over on a regular basis. The, you know, we've put out the, as the express parking is going in on the avenue, as well as on Bruce Park Avenue and Railroad, because we put in a couple more down there, the parking enforcement officers have been given instructions to monitor for meter feeding there, really focus their attention on it, and driving the idea that this is not, it's express parking. You need to get in and get out up to a total of 30 minutes. Of course, 15 minutes is acceptable. Five minutes is acceptable. 35 minutes is not. So, in conclusion, while this change may not completely resolve the downtown parking challenges, it represents a positive step towards, positive step, towards addressing community concerns. It demonstrates the Parking Authority's commitment to improving the parking experience in the downtown area and aligns with our goal of enhancing customer satisfaction. Converting five 12-hour parking spaces at the Grig Street Municipal Parking Lot into 30-minute maximum express parking is a prudent and customer-centric decision. It leverages the lot's physical proximity to downtown Greenwich, effectively serves visitors' needs, can help reduce illegal parking infractions, and can be implemented within our existing operational framework. I request that the Parking Authority consider and support this recommendation. Barring any questions?
Thank you, Chief. Just a brief background. We met with the people who live on Grig Street the other day. And this has been something, we've had a couple complaints about, as the Chief said, people who are illegally parking, usually for anywhere from three to five minutes. It's been monitored and recorded. It's not long-term, but some of the residents there happen to be there when they, that's occurring. So that was one of the issues. And at least one of the businesses on Grig Street has been really, for a couple of years now, asking for, you know, better parking situation. We think this will act We think this will actually help that business, as well as other businesses in the area who are just going in and out of there for a coffee or a book. So, it will, it should help. It doesn't solve, as the chief said, issues there. We're looking at so many other longer-term and bigger endeavors there to address the parking situation. But the residents were very happy with some of the things that were proposed, some on a temporary basis just to gather some information. So, we wanted to make sure that everybody had, lived on the street, had a notice of the meeting, and all but two were there, but they were aware of it. So, just a little background thing.
And we just throw in the additional five spots on the avenue, right across the street in that general area also. You know, it, we increased the volume ever so slightly right there. So, we take that as a small win, as well as, again, accessibility. So, that spot, we were able to, in front of 389 Greenwich Avenue? We were able to put in five spots plus a handicap van, a handicap van accessible spot, right? Which, that kind of real estate's hard to come by on Greenwich Avenue, and it was acceptable, and engineering was able to get it in there. And I, I think it's definitely a win.
Thank you.
Thanks. I feel very positive about this. I know that I've been giving you suggestions about those spaces for quite a while. My mom lived on Grig Street for like 35 years, and maybe people don't realize is, there's like a cut-through path from those spots to get to Grig Street. So, it's not like you have to walk on Greenwich Avenue and up and, you know, down to get to Grig Street. And there's a handicap spot on the corner as well. So, I'm excited. I'm sure that the merchants and the residents are excited too. So, thank you for considering it and putting it forward.
You're welcome. And we have received some feedback from a couple of the merchants in the area, the express parking, right? We've gotten some feedback as well, you know, internally for some of the initiatives that we've taken recently. Bottom of the Avenue for the express parking, they recognize that it is something in a very difficult parking environment. So, we've got nothing but positives so far.
I'll just echo my colleagues. Thank you very much for all the work and thought that's gone into this.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Lauren. Appreciate it. Okay, going on to the next item, consideration of the Design Agreement Amendment Number One between the Army Corps of Engineers and the Town of Greenwich for the Byram River Flood Control Improvements, and we have Laura McGeechee here again from the Town Attorney's Office.
Yes, good morning. Laura McGeechee on this item, which is consideration of a Design Agreement Amendment. As we all know, there's the Byram River Bridges at Route One at Portchester that, and Jim Michael here is also here, can speak on all the engineering aspects regarding the project, if there are any questions. But be it may, in April, DPW entered into an agreement with the Army Corps of Engineer regarding the design phase of this agreement. And if, for collective memory, I wasn't here, but approximately 10 years ago, there was a feasibility study done with the Army Corps of Engineer and the town regarding the reconstruction of those bridges to elevate them in order to help and reduce the flooding in Pemberwick, which I know has been problematic for a number of years, and especially more so in the more recent past. So, that being said, this is purely the design agreement to do some testing and draw plans and specifications to incorporate into a construction agreement. My understanding is that this design agreement, or the design phase, the Army Corps suggested is about a two-year design phase plan. But nevertheless, the Army Corps of Engineer, the Colonel, indicated that they need the Town of Greenwich to provide an indemnification provision as an amendment to the agreement that was signed. So, that is why we're here before you today pursuant to the charter, to make sure that it goes through all the commissions and boards with respect to that. I will tell you now, with respect to indemnification, this is 100% federally funded by the federal government. They've allocated 5.4 million for the design, and it is their contractors. Everything else, my understanding is that the project meetings obviously include input from the Department of Public Works, along with the New York State DOT, as they are New York State Bridges. But it is fully paid for and contracted by the US government. Therefore, we find that any indemnification risk is negligible at best. But nevertheless, my understanding on past practices is that if there is any indemnification provision, which has been required in the past, for instance, by state DOT, Connecticut DOT, with respect to Route One and other encroachment permits, that the town obtain insurance for the self-insured retention of $3 million, just to cover any potential risk involvement. So, there has been a quote, Megan DeMato, the risk manager's been involved, and it was, again, I will just say, challenging to find a broker to quote this insurance because nobody could really fully grapple what is being insured, and likewise here. But be it may, the powers that be at the federal government take the supremacy clause very seriously, and we, in order for them to expend their federal dollars to help the bridges, to help the town residents, require it. So, that being said, we have been to other committees. We are on for the RTM meeting next Monday. So, provided that it's, we believe this isn't controversial whatsoever, that you waive a second read due to the expedited nature of it, so that we can go to the RTM and that they continue with the design phase of this agreement that was approved in April. And again, I've done a lot of pushback on requiring this indemnification provision to no avail. I just want to let you know that I, you know, we did not relish the idea of coming before all the boards on this contract amendment, but be it as may, we are here before you requesting approval. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and certainly, Jim, if you'd like to add anything?
You did great.
Thank you, Laura. Yeah, the state sometimes does the same thing as the federal government with the indemnification. But, yeah, I, the time-sensitive nature of it, certainly I'm in favor of voting today.
Ditto.
I'm fine. As you know, I do prefer second reads, but in this, and, you know, if, if a second read on our part can spare the RTM any extra debate, you know, I'm all for it. But in this case, I'm not too, I'm not too concerned. There is a time sensitivity, and the RTM vote isn't, in some ways, it is its own second read, so I'm fine.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Laura. Appreciate that.
Absolutely.
All right, so Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the Design Agreement Amendment Number One between the Army Corps of Engineer and the Town of Greenwich for the Byram River Flood Control Improvements.
Janet Stone-McWigan, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWigan, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. The third of the four items is up next. It is a request for the consideration of MI status for Julian Curtis School renovation. It's a first read, and Bill Kelly of the Building Committee is here. Good morning, Bill.
Good morning, Mr. First Selectman. Good morning. My name is Bill Kelly. I'm the chairman of the Julian Curtis Building Committee. I have Nick McCree, who's a member of the committee, with me, and I also have Lisa Yates, who's virtual, if you have any questions. And now that I find you can waive a second read, I'm even more interested in presenting it a very positive light, absolutely. So, pursuant to Mr. Wetmore's memo of August 31st, Julian Curtis Committee decided we need to move immediately for MI status. So, pursuant to that memo, this board has to refer the MI proposal to planning and zoning. So, I would ask that this morning, if you could do it, that would be great, to refer this proposal to the planning and zoning. Now, let me go through it, if I can, briefly with you. What we're talking about is the front, yes? I'd love to see that diagram, sure, because they'd rather see that than hear me try to explain what we're doing in the front. This is the front of Julian Curtis. What's very important is that the doors that are there now are not the original, and the fire marshal doesn't like those doors. There's two doors. We would replace it with one larger door, which would provide better access. We're also putting in two ramps, as depicted in that drawing there, to provide access. So, this is one of our charges, to provide ADA access at Julian Curtis, and we would like to, under the radar, because I prefer that Old Greenwich and Central get all the headlines, just get this done, and put in the two ramps, put in the door. As you can see, security is also provided here, because, first of all, the person has to be buzzed in, then they get into a secure vestibule, and they have a security window there at the vestibule. They then have to pass that to come into the office where there is yet another locked door into the corridor. So, it provides much more security for the school. It's liked by the fire marshal, and then we're putting one door. We're having some preliminary meetings with the fire marshal and security coming up, but I wanted to move this on a fast track, get the referral to planning and zoning, and I promised I would be under three minutes, and I think I have done that. And I thank you for adding me to the calendar. I really do appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bill, and I'm very familiar with that door, and I am happy to waive the first reading for this, because we're just referring it to, you know, to planning and zoning, and we don't want to slow anything down, so.
Great.
Yeah, and I'll just ask Janet if you have anything to add, because I know you're the liaison to the building committee.
I am the liaison. I show up at 7:45 on our, at our Friday meetings. I am so happy to support this project in any way I can. So, no, I mean, I'm personally very familiar with what, what we're talking about.
So, when is the anticipated start date to this?
Well, that's interesting, because we believe we have certain money in the bank, and what we would need is the elevator to be ordered. Now that we've agreed on a location of the elevator, we may have to preorder that elevator even before we get a general contractor on board, because there's about a year lead time.
Gotcha.
So, that's one of the problems we have. We've got to get that done, and hopefully, I'm going to have conversations with the other powers, the BET and others, to see if everybody's on board with that, so we don't get any pushback. So, all right? That's it?
Thank you.
All right? I appreciate it for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate all you're doing.
You vote now, right?
Yes. But I think we're not, we're not requesting MI status. We're voting to refer it to planning and zoning.
Correct.
So, Lauren Raven, I motion that we refer the request for municipal improvement status of Julian Curtis School renovation to planning and zoning.
Janet Stone-McWigan, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWigan, yes.
And thanks for coming, Nick.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, last, last item is the request for approval of a lease and MI referral for the cellular monopine tower at the Nathaniel Witherall. This is something that's been in the works for a long time.
We have two more items.
Oh, we have two more items that were added. Okay. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. And we have Ben Brannion, our town administrator and COO. Good morning, Ben.
Good morning. Also joined today via Zoom, and Jenny, if you don't mind promoting him, John Arthur, who's the president and CEO of Wireless Edge Tower. He's a consultant. We've used him in the past for cellular work at the Harris Golf Course. Also have attorney Chris Fisher from Cuddy &amp; Federer, and Harry Carey from the Director of External Affairs with AT&amp;T, and Assistant Town Attorney Amina Ahmad worked with us as well with the language for the, for the lease. So, truly took a team, but just a couple introductory comments before I turn it over to your attorney, Fisher, which will then have John go through the PowerPoint. You have a significant packet in front of you of the, the work that went into it, the evaluation. So, just some dates for you. This will be the first read. Hopefully, the second read, if it's received favorably, will be at the end of this month. Then we refer to P&amp;Z. They may take one or two reads. That'll be, but we're really working towards an 11/17 submission to the RTM, which will then have approval in December. So, there's still a land use approval process, and that's just our process. There's process that the, that John and Chris and Harry have to go through with the state. Just a quick aside, there's, the state Historic Preservation Office is actually doing a site visit next week, so that we're going through a significant due diligence. And also, lastly, the Nathaniel Witherall Board of Directors did take this up at their meeting last Monday. They plan to have a formal vote next month as well, but so, so far, we have, knock on the proverbial wood, received nothing but positive feedback on the, on this proposal. I think it's, it solves a long-term public safety issue that, in this area, there's a deficiency in cell coverage. In addition, the residents of Nathaniel Witherall have significant cellular connectivity problems. This solves their problem as well. So, it solves both institutional issue and Nathaniel Witherall, coupled with, with the public in the surrounding area for cell, cell coverage. There is a revenue sharing. This comes at a zero cost to the town. Wireless Edge will be presenting the monopine, monopine tower, and then there's revenue sharing, depending on how many carriers are eventually installed on the facility. The last piece I'll just raise is, I think we're all familiar with some of the, the condition of these monopines over time that can, can deteriorate. Amina and I are happy with the language that we were able to negotiate with, we were calling branch management. So, there is, there is a language in the, in the lease where it talks about the monopine branches shall be maintained in a manner to ensure symmetry of the structure, et cetera, et cetera. So, we, as much as we enjoyed writing that, and never thought we'd be writing language about branch management on the tree, I think it's important, given the stealth technology you're attempting to do to, into the environment of the site. Those are the introductory comments, but I'll turn it over to your attorney, Fisher, who then go to John Arthur on the, we have a quick PowerPoint slide, and be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Ben. And just to clarify, it's a monopine, not a frankenpine.
Exactly. I want to make sure I use mono, mono.
How things have changed.
Good morning, everyone. Thanks for having us here, and we're quite positive about branch management also. Thank you. This has been a project we've been working on and focused on, on the last year. I would like to say that this particular area of Greenwich has been an area of focus for the carriers on and off for decades. I myself have worked various wireless projects in the Town of Greenwich, going back 20, 25 years, and I can remember various sighting efforts along North Street and trying to find a place for a facility to solve the problem in mid-country Greenwich. And as you can imagine, that's a challenge for us. So, I would say probably, just off the cuff with Harry and AT&amp;T, we've probably looked at this area of town, you know, three, four times over the last 20 years, and constantly came back to this particular area, both technically and also because the town's interest in control of a particular sighting opportunity. And then you put together the confluence of the coverage area. As was mentioned, Nathaniel Witherall, you have a 200-bed facility. Obviously, we have some anchor institutions in the vicinity and the area and the community as well, educational facilities. So, this is not just about mobile traffic anymore. This is about in-building coverage, and it's not just about convenience, it is about public safety. So, we feel like we're at a really great confluence in time to work on a facility that will solve the community need, do it in a way where the town maintains, frankly, maximum control, because you would be the leasing entity. That being said, the regulatory and approval process for this is quite substantial. As a municipal improvement, we're well aware that we're going to, you know, work with the P&amp;Z, RTM, U, to get to a point where maybe this is a leasable site for us. Our next steps after that would include the Siting Council, which has exclusive permitting jurisdiction over towers, so they would be involved. We also, as Ben mentioned, we have the State Historic Preservation Officer. So, there's a lot of layers to this, but we cannot achieve the community benefit of enhanced wireless service without your help. Really, I think it comes down to one of these municipal sites in this area, otherwise we're going to maybe be back in five or 10 more years saying the same thing. So, we really look forward to your assistance, and we want to be a great partner. And I turn it over to John Arthur, who's the CEO of Wireless Edge, who's online, and he'll, he'll do a brief presentation about the specifics.
Thank you, Chris. Hi, good morning, John.
Good morning. Thank you, Chris, and I apologize for not being there in person. That was actually my bad. I got my, my schedule screwed up a bit with another meeting. So, I'll jump right into the PowerPoint, and I'm going to try to get through this.
So I'll jump right into the PowerPoint, and I'm going to try to get through this.
Okay, will you be sharing it, or would you like me to share?
I can share my application.
Great, so I need to make you a co-host, and you need to accept.
Jenny, could you ask him to turn his volume up? Or could you turn his volume up?
He's going to have to do that.
Just a little. John, if you, can you turn the volume up a little bit on your end, if it's possible?
It's his microphone, not the volume.
The microphone.
Pardon me?
Volume is what you hear, not what you speak.
Wait, can you not hear? There's, hold on.
It's technical.
Not sure I know how to do that on my end.
Or maybe just speak a little louder, if that's okay?
Yes, if you could just speak up, I think I raised the volume.
Okay, that's fine.
Better.
So I will share the app now.
Thank you.
And, jump into it, so hopefully you see that?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Add it to PowerPoint mode. So, you know, introductions have already covered. I'm going to skip through some of the early charts. And by the way, all the photographs in this presentation are our sites, sites that we've developed and managed. You know, just a little bit about Wireless Edge, as Ben said, you know, we have been working for the town for several years, assisting with antenna-related issues, particularly at the golf course, and then, you know, looking at these sites to improve coverage in the town. And as we all know, there's a lot of coverage holes that need to be dealt with, and we're working on a few. This is really the first one. Wireless Edge, we're a tower operator. We specialize in government projects. We really work nationwide, and we're currently developing sites in about 15 states. And again, I would say 95% or more of our sites are government properties. This chart just shows some of the areas that we work in around the country, everything from individual municipalities to countywide or statewide agencies. So a little bit about the project, here's a map. There were two sites that we were looking at. The alternate site was at the animal control property. Our standing is that that's not the preferred site for the town. So this chart pack really focuses on the Nathaniel Witherall property. As you can see, there is a wetlands, it's a federal wetlands and a stream, which really cuts off the back of the property. We probably wouldn't want to be there anyway, except it gets closer to residences. And the site location is up on the north end. There's an existing driveway, it's a dirt road, really, that's going into the site, so access is really already there. And it's away from the other areas, the functional areas of the facility. When we walked the site Monday with shipboat, they may point us at alternate locations. There's really not a lot of options outside of the wooded area just off the parking lot, so that's something we can look at, that is developable. I'm not sure it makes that much of a difference, and it actually puts it closer to the residences. Here's a view of the road going in. The site would really be right back there. You kind of see where the dirt is, and it does have a nice backdrop of trees, which is nice when you're using a monopine design. They never really look good when they're standing by themselves. It's always best when there's a backdrop. And then here's an arrow of the same thing. We've located the site to preserve the existing path that goes back and forth from Nathaniel over to the cottages. And here's a layout. It's a 75-by-75-foot compound. With a monopine, you do need to have a bit of room around the site in order to install it and also to maintain it. They're really accessible by manaliff and crane, not so much by climbing. And the way that works is, the better-looking trees, you really can climb and work on like a regular monopole. If the tree looks bad, then you can probably climb it and service it like a regular monopole. So it's a bit of a trade-off, and we tend to go with the improved aesthetics. Utilities come right in from parsonage, and we would just improve the existing access path, make a little bit of a turnaround. The site is situated in the center. And again, the path goes, the existing path goes right behind the site. It could be pushed back further, and then the path could be relocated around, but I think this really makes sense to position it here. This is just a diagram of the tree. So this shows four carriers. We typically add a fifth carrier in from a capacity standpoint. There is space at the top to put town antennas, local public safety, and that includes volunteer organizations. So the top carry being AT&amp;T is at the 124-foot level, and that leaves enough room to put the municipal mount and have a little tapered branch section at the top to maintain the looks of the tower. Then each carrier get, each other carrier spot is 10 foot down. So here's a photo simulation. We conducted a balloon test and photo simulations. This is a typical tree. This is actually more of a medium-branch tree. The tree that we're providing is going to look better than that, and I'll show you an example, but this is one they had in their modeling software. So here's a view from parsonage before you get to the main entrance. And then here's a view looking right down the access path. And of course, we would landscape, this just shows the fence and the typical compound, but we would landscape all around the base of that, typically arborvitaries or pine trees, and that's something we would work with the town on, what they'd like to see. And you can see this view, the antennas are at the top, located behind leaf covers. So this is an actual tree site that we operate. This one has a few wapingers. This is a dense-branch tree. It's really about the best you could buy out there. The pole is actually painted with a bark pattern, and these have a very fluffy type of leaf. That's really our preferred design, and it's the best tree that I've seen out there. It's definitely not a frankenpine, like you'd see on the Hudson Parkway. Again, it's designed for five carriers plus public safety. And one of the things that we learned in doing these is that you really can't design them to be climbed and worked on like a regular pole. You really need to have a bucket truck access, because the branches are so dense. We also conducted a view shed study, and this shows the visibility of the site. So the dark yellow, this is really a seasonal visibility, so this shows year-round, whereas the yellow is, you know, more summer, and the orange is all year. As you can see, it's a very small visibility area. Most of the neighborhoods, if not all, are really protected by the fact that the site is, has separation of dense tree buffer. And the site's really not that high, Compteur Lot of Towers, it's only 130 feet high or 135 with a branch. The green blotches are open spaces. And generally speaking, when we look at these visibilities, what we see is open fields, you know, those are areas where you look across and you can see the site. So a lot of visibility studies, you would see splotches of visibility kind of sprinkled around. Here, it's really just localized right to the property itself, the cemetery across the street, and just a few areas adjacent. So here's a coverage map. The first two maps are AT&amp;T, it's kind of a before and after. The Site A is the site we're talking about, the Site B was the animal control facility. As you can see, it's a lot of white space. The white indicates areas where it's poor coverage. Green is really the coverage that you want for in-building. The orange is really more out in your car, that type of coverage, in-vehicle coverage. But as you can see, currently, there's a lot of space that's white and desperately needs coverage. So once the site is operational, this is what you'll see. You still see a lot of white areas around there, so there still needs more work to be done, but this will certainly pick up that hole. And it does connect up with the other sites, particularly to the south. And again, this is 700 megahertz coverage, which is really your kind of your basic LTE coverage for making calls, using data, and things like that. There are other coverage, there are other frequencies that AT&amp;T would use for capacity, but for just raw coverage and be able to use your phone, this is what you're getting. We also have a similar plot for Verizon. You notice that Verizon has a little bit of a blotch in the middle-south-east of the site. That's really just residual coverage from some of their other sites. But as you can see, it's very similar to AT&amp;T, you've got a large uncovered area around the site. And then when the new site is in, again, it's very similar to AT&amp;T, where you connect up with the sites to the south and the other north. And that's really it. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. No, I have no questions. I'll turn it over to my colleagues. I'm familiar with the discussions on this and the need for it. Usually, in years past, when you'd mention a pole, any type of antenna tower, you get lots of opposition. It's not the case anymore, and certainly in this area, not only for Nathaniel Witherall, but as Chris mentioned, a lot of the neighboring roads there and the residents there are very much in favor of this. So thank you for the thorough presentation. Any questions?
No, likewise, thank you for the presentation. Similarly, I can attest that Nathaniel Witherall is a dead zone. It really is, so.
Yeah, my poor mother can't do any FaceTime from there.
And by the way, you mentioned branch management. That's actually something we actually do have to do with these sites, is managing the branching, the installation of the carriers, come back and replace something, maybe a storm or branch breaks and needs to be replaced. So it's actually one of the things that we have to do with these type of sites.
Well, thank you very much. And Chris, thank you. Harry, thank you. Did you have anything to add?
I did.
Okay, always good to see you, my friend. Thank you very much, and we'll take this up in two weeks for final. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Ben. Okay, last item is a request for a temporary closure of a portion of East Elm Street for a private development project. And Chris Franco has been patiently waiting here. Good morning, Chris.
Good morning, thank you. Jenny, can we add Jim Parlante, assuming he's there? He's not there. Well, I guess I'll proceed. I'm Chris Franco, the developer of Condominium Project at 97 and 90 East Elm Street. We were in front of you maybe a month or so ago, seeking a temporary road closure, because we had to do some testing in the road, which we did. And Tony DeAndrea and the Sewer Department and Vidi have met and come up with a plan to do the final connections for the sanitary system and for stormwater drainage, and we'd like to do that work the week of the 25th, which is a week from Monday. We're pretty much finished with the project, not exactly finished with the project, but we've sold the units and we're working hard to get the connections done, because we'd like to get folks in there. We have one buyer who has a child at Julian Curtis School, and they're living in a temporary accommodation right now while their daughter is at school, so we're very anxious to get it done. So we have prepared a map that has been submitted for how we would be providing the detour. I think it's the same that we did a month or so back, and it would only be during construction hours, and folks would be, that live on the street would be able to come and go, and we wouldn't be impeding pedestrian access. Hopefully, it won't require five days. When we were here last time, we got approval for two days, and it only took one. And I was just seeing if that was Jim Parlante, but it's not. So, but the, you know, the professionals have suggested that we get permission for up to five days, and so that's what we're seeking.
Thank you, Chris, and I know that it's time-sensitive, and we didn't hear any negative feedback, at least I didn't, on the last closure we did there, and I know it's towards the end there, and everybody's anxious to get in there. So I'm okay with waiving the second read, if my colleagues are...
I have to say, I'm not, we only got this, I think, less than 12 hours ago, so I haven't had a chance to review anything. I mean, we definitely, when you came before us, we absolutely wanted to try to accommodate you, and we think we did, but this sort of pushes me past my comfort zone, the fact that I haven't had a chance to look at it. I understand that it's time-sensitive, but...
Well, I apologize that it's coming late. We didn't actually think we were going to need the road closure. We thought we would be able to do it by keeping one lane open, but because of, Tony DeAndrea's been working with the Sewer Department, because of the location, it has to be a little bit further towards the center of the road, and now, and they just concluded that they are going to need a road closure, so I do apologize for not having it here sooner. We were actually originally hoping to do the work this coming week, starting on Monday, but it's not going to be feasible, so they're now suggesting the week of the 25th. I don't know when, I mean, if we, it'll be very disruptive. It's not necessarily so horrible for us, but it is disruptive for the people that plan to move in, to push this out much longer, but I understand what your point is.
Yeah, because we don't meet again until the 28th, so that's the end of the month.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I mean, I certainly understand, respect what Janet said, but I'm okay with doing it for the reasons you mentioned, but certainly, we'll have a vote.
Pardon me?
We'll have a vote.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chris, I appreciate it.
Can I have the agenda?
Yes, you can.
So I can do the right motion? Thank you. Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the request for a temporary closure of the portion of East Elm Street for a private development project, for the dates Monday, September 25th to Friday, September 29th.
I'll second that. All those in favor? Fred Camilloza, yes?
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, no.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Public comment, period, unless Andy wants to get up and chat? Says no? Okay.
What's the good news, Andy?
Any appointments or nominations?
Not today.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camilloza, yes?
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Jenny, and thank you, Don, behind the wall. Take care.